And we are in the council session for tonight. And we're going to begin, as we always do, with prayer and with a pledge by this time, by Councilwoman Clarkson.
Dear God, thank you for allowing us to be present in this place, in this space, and in this community. Thank you for the fair weather and the rain that you've given us and all of the beauty that surrounds us. Tonight is every time we come together with citizens, we're making informed, important decisions. And please always guide and direct our hearts and our thoughts and our minds to do what is best for all citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you may be seated. This time announcements of community interest. Mr. Gugnus?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. Those up. We are in the midst of the summer stuff, and there is a lot going on, as you can see from this, so I am going to go through it pretty quickly, just trying to get some highlights. The library, we have a lot of things going over there. We have youth programs. We have a puppet show tomorrow at the Calo, I believe, at 10:00. We have Lego Club both this Thursday and next Thursday. And then we also have family movies on those same days. Tomorrow, or Thursday, we have Doolittle, and that starts at 2:00 p.m. at the library. And then next week, we have Trolls World Tour, which I know nothing about, but it sounds interesting. That's till Thursday, July 22nd. That one starts at 2:00 p.m. We also have programs for adults. We have the Texas Talking Book Club next Thursday at the Kerr Regional History Center, and I believe that's going to be going over Sandra Cisneros' book, Woman Hollering Creek. Lot of interesting stuff going on over there. And then we'll be real quick with what's going at the parks activities. 7:00 p.m. this Saturday is Concerts by the River Returns. I don't know if you were out there for the first one, but a lot of fun. That little girl had a blast out there and provided everybody with a real highlight in dancing to the music. That's this Saturday. We have jazz music with Motel Moho and then the Mike Kasberg Jazz Trio. And then next Friday, Concerts by the River is back again. So both of those are a lot of fun. I would encourage everybody to go out there and check it out. Thank you.
All right, good. Counsel, any other items?
I do. I have something that I don't think anybody except for myself has any interest in, but I will take liberty if you allow me.
Yes.
Today is my anniversary, so I am so happy to be spending it with all of you guys.
So spending it with us is better than flowers and steak dinner?
Well, I told Austin to come. I think he's just running late, so.
Oh, all right. By the way, that book, book review of Sandra Cisneros' book, Woman Hollering Creek, that has gotten a lot of attention over the years since it's been out. Okay. Now, we have two presentations to make, and I would like first, representatives from First United Methodist Church to come forward. Here. Jane is with us, and Tracy Davis, who is an executive in nursing at Peterson Health. And let me read this proclamation. City of Kerrville requests or recognizes First United Methodist Church with the July 13, 2021 Kerrville Kindness Award. In the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, Kerrville's First United Methodist Church opened its gymnasium as a mass vaccinations clinic to support the collaborative efforts of the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Peterson Health, A T B, and Texas Military Department. First United Methodist Church hosted 23 vaccine clinics from February to June in an effort to present our citizens or to protect our citizens against the deadly virus. The Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to First United Methodist Church for its commitment to serving the Kerrville community, signed by the city council. Now, I'm going to extend this. I publicly thanked the church in worship back in April. And I just want to read a little bit of what I shared there. And during the winter storm in February, you opened to the church, you opened the doors of this church, to people needing shelter. And the pastor with others transported 40 nursing home patients to safety and warmth after their nursing home lost power. And Marcus Willis of Light on the Hill prepared 700 meals for people in the shelters. And then I said, as mayor, I look for people and organizations to make our community stronger, especially through acts of kindness. You are certainly doing that. And as a minister, I rejoice to see those who are strong witness for Christ, and you are certainly being that. Thank you very, very much, David.
Thank you.
The church is doing so much for this community. Just amazing. Now, we recognize Parks Recreation Department, Ashley Boyle is the director. What? Okay, yeah, please, come up. Chair of Parks Recreation Department.
Advisory Board.
Advisory Board, yes, yes. Good to see you. Did you know we have 23 parks across this city? And you think parks add to that the recreation, the events? I mean, it is a lot. City of Kerrville proclamation, whereas Parks Recreation Programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Kerrville, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas Parks Recreation Programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks Recreation Areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. Our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of the community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, the city of Kerrville, County of Kerr, recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now, therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, mayor of the city of Kerrville, hereby proclaim the month of July 2021 as Parks and Recreation Month in Kerrville, and urge all citizens to join me as we recognize the importance and value of parks and recreation, and further encourage citizens to visit area parks and become more familiar with the parks and recreation programs available to all residents. Thank you. And now we come to our visitors and citizens forum. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda, they speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out their speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. The speaker request form must be submitted to the city secretary before the item is called or read into record. City council may not discuss or take any action on any item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. This gives an opportunity for citizens to speak on items other than those on the agenda. And at this time, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. We have two. John Harrison.
All right.
Good evening, counsel. My wife and I have lived in Kerrville for 15 years, and during that time, we've seen a lot of changes. We even, we have a new city hall complex. We've got more than five miles of Guadalupe River Trail, a refurbished tennis center, a sports complex for our young ball and soccer players. Shriners University has become even more part of Kerrville with the Trailhead Beer Garden. We've got Friday's Farmer's Market, Fourth of July event in the park, the Arcadia Theater, beautiful murals on downtown buildings. We have a reused water storage reservoir for keeping our community assets green and to conserve water. We have many new and interesting restaurants in the downtown area. The city formulated the 2050 plan to guide future growth. We've got a new source of drinking water with a well drilled into the Ellenberg Aquifer. Plans are being executed as we speak to light up Tranquility Park during the holiday season. And during the last 18 months, we've seen many of our community quietly take action to help feed those that were struggling during the pandemic. We see the Doll Center is finding new life and focus and money from the community. We've got new businesses out near the airport. We've got investments in infrastructure, such as lift stations and streets. And where I live, Comanche Trace, the number of houses has grown from less than 100 to almost 500 by the end of this year. Almost $250 million of new tax base for the city. That's a lot of change in the 15 years. There are probably many other events or changes that you might have mentioned, but those will come down to me. All of these contribute to the quality of life in Kerrville. Many individuals, groups, nonprofits, foundations, businesses, and governmental units made this happen. I'm not going to try to list the names because I'll forget some, but there's a lot of them that participate in that. These happen because this community is made up of interested citizens willing to get involved and move the community forward. They see an opportunity to improve our community, develop plans, and seek support from the community, and most important, do not let the people who are almost always against progress deter them from moving forward. This council and previous ones played a key role in many of these, and I want to thank you. The city council and staff deserve a lot of credit for each year creating a conservative and sustainable budget, plus maintaining the pledge made in 2010 to not raise indebtedness if it required an increase in property taxes. We property owners in Kerrville pay property tax to six different taxing entities. Our taxes have gone up during these 15 years, and that's not surprising, inflation and all. What's interesting to me is that the city of Kerrville received in 2007 26 cents of each tax dollar we paid. Last year, the city of Kerrville only received 24 cents of our tax dollars. Sounds to me like you guys and previous councils, along with city staff, have done a great job managing our finances, just what we elected you to do. I want to encourage you to move forward with the Public Safety Project. You see a need, let's get it done, just like you've done in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Harrison, can you provide your address, please?
Oh, 2911 Drive.
Thank you. Michael Sigerman?
My name is Michael Sigerman. I live at 4,000 Comanche Trace Drive. If you don't know me, you probably know me as Delane Sigerman's husband, and I'm proud to be that. And I have been watching for the last several meetings or several months. We have four or five people that come up here to the city council meetings, basically to complain and accuse, never offering any positive suggestions, but, you know, complaining about everything and making statements that the constituents of Kerrville don't agree with what you guys are doing, and I beg to differ with that. I fully support people coming and expressing their opinions and giving you what they think or if they don't agree with something that you're doing. I do not support people coming up here and calling you liars, telling you that you're only doing what you want to do, that you're building monuments on the backs of the taxpayers, which you are all taxpayers as well. I know that's not true. I look at, I look at this city council here, and I think to myself that I see three city council members here that are serving second terms, elected by the citizens. So obviously, the citizens of Kerrville, the residents of Kerrville, the voters of Kerrville think you're doing a good job. I see a first-term council member here that was elected in November by a record almost 70% of the vote. So obviously, the residents and the voters of Kerrville think she's doing a good job. I see a new city council member here, which I have high hopes for, to bring fresh ideas, to learn while he's here, to do what the rest of you guys do, which is to put your own thoughts and opinions aside and do what you think is best for the residents and the citizens of Kerrville, to watch us grow, as John has said. I see unbelievably qualified and dedicated staff, which I've had the opportunity and the privilege to work with on several commissions. I've seen a couple of the people come up here in the past that have spoken and complained and criticized, and I would like to point out that two of those people put themselves up in front of the residents and the citizens of Kerrville and ran for city council, and the residents and the voters of Kerrville decided they didn't want them on city council. So I just want you to know that I have a lot of friends. I live in Comanche Trace. I talk to people all the time. I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission. What I hear from the majority of people that I speak with is they're very happy with the job that you guys are doing. They appreciate the time and effort that you put in. They appreciate your service. And personally, I want you to be well aware that most of your constituent here in Kerrville think you're doing a fabulous job and keep doing what you're doing. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers.
Okay. At this time, we come to the consent agenda. And are there any of these items to be pulled by the council?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, excuse me, pull 4C.
Okay.
Not against it, but I think a little more explanation. And we have Mary Rohr from the airport and John Miller also.
Major.
Major, that's right. I'm sorry. I know better. And I think they can explain a little bit on that one for us.
Okay.
I would like to remove 4A and 4F.
Wait, 4A and what?
4F. The very, on the second page, the very last one.
We're going to approve B, D, and E.
Oh, okay. Minutes for the city council meeting, 22nd.
I'll make a motion that we approve then on the consent agenda for B, for D, and for E.
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Is there, there is a motion second on that matter? All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands. Okay. And let's go to 4A. And Mr. Guillermo.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if you could just give some information on this, I'd just like for the public to also be aware, and then why the city also finds that there's no need for the property.
Sure. So let me start off with a little bit of history on the property itself. So it was deeded over to the city of Kerrville in 1963, sorry, by the Kerrville District Board of Hospitals and Homes of Southwest Texas Methodist Conference. And the idea was to construct a water tower that was constructed at that point in time. The water tower itself was removed on July 16, 2001, and has since been sitting as a vacant property. And that property has been maintained by Parks Department, has been mowed continually over year after year. And it is a property that essentially, we don't need it yet. We don't need it. We don't use it. All we do is maintain it, and it's a great opportunity for maybe a developer or homeowner or builder to come in and buy that property and build a home.
Good. All right. Your motion on 4A.
I move that we accept 4A as presented.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you. I was going to ask, so approving it with the recommendation that we authorize the city manager to sell the property, does that mean that we're also going to be using the bid process to do that?
Yes, we'll be using the bid process for that, for the sale.
That's good.
Good. Got a motion second on 4A, all in favor. Let it be known by the raised hand. Okay.
Thank you.
And it passes. Then on 4C.
Yes. If Mary would explain to us a little bit why this is coming back to us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council members and staff. My name is Mary Rohr. I'm the airport manager at Kerrville Kerr County Airport. Attached is a proposed resolution urging the Texas Department of Transportation to reinstate funding to maintain pavements on our primary runway, associated taxiways, and concrete apron in front of our terminal building. The airport formally funded, applied for this funding in 2020. We've been waiting anxiously to get this work done. The estimated cost of this maintenance is about $1.8 million. It's funded 90% by the state and 10% by the city and the county. So in our proposed airport budgets that we submitted, both the city and the county by the end of last month, we included that $90,000 in both of our requests. Keeping the taxiways and aprons well-maintained is very critical to airport operations and required by the FAA. Delaying this funding will also increase our costs in the future. Our main runway is 6,000 feet in length and about 100 foot wide. That's a lot of, that's a lot of floor seal out that way. So we're looking, wanting to make sure we keep this going and keep our pavement going. We learned about the delay about a week after we had our big meeting over the annual meeting. We started writing letters and made communications with our various elected officials. We were making our concern known, so, which was good because we made some noise. Today, I received communication or a call from Britton Davis in Senator Buckingham's office. He provided me with an update of the 1.5 million, or $15 million Tech dot grant that was allocated to another airport. He's been working with Tech dot, Governor Abbott's office, Lieutenant Governor Patrick's offices as well. So it's made it up to why we're all here and why we do what we do. Our senator is working towards a solution to fill the void created and hopefully find funds to refund the, to be able to fund the proposed work. Our airport, as well as many others, were mostly rural airports that have been affected. So it's good to get a feedback, and we're glad to see that whatever work that we've been doing has been heard and listened to. The Kerr County Commissioner Court approved a similar resolution yesterday. Both resolutions will be forwarded to our local elected officials. I've also been in communication with Representative Mira's office as well, and they've been active on understanding what's going on, and hopefully others. We've got some advocates that are also working with us in the aviation community with the legislature, too. So we've built some momentum up, so hopefully they'll help us regain our funding, and we request your support of the attached resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 33-2021. I'll second that.
Okay. Got a motion second, any discussion of that item?
I just want to thank you for that. I did want to, just for public information, have we, from a city's standpoint, already budgeted that, the funds that were anticipated to come from Tech dot into our budget? And if so, if we don't know, are we just going to remove it from our budget?
Yeah, so as you know, we haven't submitted a proposed budget. That's at the end of this month. I don't think, I don't anticipate that we're going to know from Tech dot at this point on whether that's going to be part of that budget or not for their budgeting purposes for next fiscal year. So more than likely, what we would anticipate with a longer-prolonged decision from Tech dot is a budget amendment mid-year, if we get a decision from them sometime in next fiscal year or once we have more information.
And I remember I talked to you about this, but how much will the cost increase if we don't get that funding?
I don't know. I'm just looking at our airport, and we, you know, we've been kind of, I hate to say it this way, but we postponed some maintenance, waiting for this to come. So it would be a matter, we'd get some, we would just work on band-aiding it until we get the funding, so hopefully that'll come soon. And then EA, we've got a lot of maintenance out there, too, so I want to make sure we don't lose another cycle, so that's our piece also.
But our passing this resolution, as the county commissioners have as well, is one more thing you've got to show Austin.
Exactly. We're rattling the cages.
The support, okay.
Yeah.
All right. All in, all in favor of 4C, if you let me know by the raised hand, and it's unanimous.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mary, and for your efforts.
4F?
Yes. There was an amendment that I wanted to make to 4F. If you'll look at the last page of the minutes, and it's paragraph four. On my motion, it stated just that I moved to deny the item, and this was in regards to the resolution of intent for the certificate of obligation. In fact, my motion was also to instruct staff to return to council. And in fact, I'll just put it all in the motion, so you can read. And I have a copy for the city secretary, too, if this passes. But I'll move to amend page three, paragraph four of the minutes, to add the following at the end of the first sentence, and to instruct staff to return to council with appropriate documents and information to put this bond on a ballot to be voted on by the citizens at the earliest election. So my motion, so just a correction, is my motion wasn't just to deny, but it was also to instruct staff.
I have a question on that. Are motions in our minutes supposed to be verbatim, or are they supposed to be summaries?
They're actions.
It's an action. Okay. So the action was to deny the item.
But also to, for staff to return to council. That was the full part of the motion. And so I just like that, like it to reflect that in the minutes. Because if I didn't make that part of the motion and it did pass, let's just say the motion did pass. We would have instructed council, council had instructed staff at that time to return to council to put this bond on an election ballot. So without that portion of it in the minutes, it doesn't show what the full motion was.
I'm not interested in making that amendment, but there may be someone else that would want to second that.
Okay, I assume that's in the form of a motion?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a second?
What is the motion?
So the motion is just to amend that, that my, the sentence right there. Councilmember Garcia moved to deny the item and to add at the end of it, and to instruct staff to return to council with appropriate documents and information to put this bond on election to be voted on.
Okay.
That way it shows the full motion. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Is there a second? If not, the motion fails for lack of a second. Okay.
We need to approve it. I'll move that we approve. What item number is that?
Yeah, that's right, F.
Item 4F.
Right.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion?
I just can't approve it without the appropriate motion in the minutes.
Okay.
I'll be voting against it.
All right. All in favor of passing 4F, room 4, if you let me know by the raised hand, it's four to zero.
Unopposed, we have none.
We have one opposed, right. Okay. That's the end of the consent agenda, and we move into a series of public hearings. And the first, 5A, if you would read that in for us.
Yes, sir. Resolution number 30-2021, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of approximately 0.11 acre comprising Lot 2, Block 7, Lowry Edition, a subdivision within the city of Kerrville, and more commonly known as 205 Starkey. And there's no one signed up, but it is a public hearing.
Okay. All right. Okay. Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Presentation real quick. Says a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 205 Starkey. This request is consistent with the comprehensive plan since there is no change in the base zoning. The subject property would be required parking based on the short-term rental of one space per bedroom and one additional space for the off-site manager. And they've shown that they can meet those, those parking spaces in the front yard, or excuse me, in the front driveway, as shown here. And on June 3rd, the planning commission recommended approval with unanimous vote. And here's a list of the conditions. Front of the house. Local amenities as provided by the applicant. There's the list of conditions, the standard conditions represented or recommended, excuse me, for a short-term rental unit. Guest notification, occupancy taxes, any signage should they choose to. choose to put signs on the property, off-street parking requirements, maximum occupancy, and of course, any other zoning requirements apply.
Okay. All right. Um, counsel, any questions on this one?
Um, I don't necessarily have a question, but I do have an email that I received. I believe there were notices were sent out and I believe there were three people who objected. Am I, am I correct?
That's correct. Yeah. Twenty-eight letters were mailed out for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We didn't receive three responses.
Okay. And then, um, and I had talked with a couple of those, uh, individuals. And then I received today another email that I'd like to just kind of summarize. Um, uh, this is another neighbor who lives at 2016 Starkey Street. Her name is Karen Sides. And, uh, she asked that I, uh, bring this information tonight. She was not able to come. And, um, uh, she had some, some good things to say. She said aesthetically, they've done a great, great job with the, um, with the property, but the concerns are the same concerns, of course, that we're hearing. Uh, uh, too much noise, trash, parking in the streets. Um, uh, with this one, she said they had gravelled the front yard, which I think the, the picture does show, and, and they had done a, a good job with that. Another one of her concerns, and it's, um, I'll just state what she has said. Uh, she is, she's talked about our Airbnbs moving into neighborhoods like this one, uh, that, uh, end up taking away affordable housing from, uh, individuals that, um, if, uh, the, if it wasn't an Airbnb, it could be, uh, owned by someone, uh, workforce housing, uh, that would be in that, uh, income bracket. And, um, that's something that bothers her. It concerns her. Um, she feels like that, uh, uh, we're, we, maybe we're doing too much of that and we're not taking into consideration the fact that some of these, um, these houses could be used for, uh, for families. And, um, so I just, I wanted to share that with you guys and, uh, uh, I, um, I have to, I have to agree with her. Um, I, um, the other neighbors that I talked to that were concerned, uh, one has a, uh, there's a single mother and two children who live close. And, and again, it's, it's some of these same concerns. We have people that, uh, people that are living close to them that they don't know. And so that just, it's a, an uneasiness for people. And, um, uh, one of the things that, and I don't know, maybe this is just a, a duty thing. Um, I, I wish that our, our B and B, Airbnb people would make more of an effort to talk with neighbors, to, uh, let them know what's going on. Um, uh, I was very impressed. We had, uh, Kim Richardson here, uh, several weeks ago, and, uh, she has a list of things that she does. She, she gives her phone number to, uh, the neighbors. She, she talks with them. She visits with them, uh, and tries to see what she can do to help, uh, ease their fears. And, uh, I wish that more of our Airbnb people would, would do that. Uh, I, for me, it would just be something that would make me feel better. And, um, uh, I just, I wish that we, and, and I know we, we post, we give them the sh, the rules and that's posted, but, um, how many people really, really look at it? I don't know how many people really, really pay attention. That's hard to say. But I think, I think our owners could do a better job with incorporating the Airbnb into the neighborhood. And, uh, something that I would like, I would like to see them do, and maybe we wouldn't have letters of opposition then.
Hey, do you have other questions on counsel?
I do. Is our?
Okay. I'll ask you for you in a minute.
Um, are there any people, the applicant or people in opposition to this here tonight?
Yeah.
And G, uh, coming out of the planning and zoning meeting, the people who did come and, and speak, we actually spoke, uh, directly with them, had great conversation. They have my cell phone number and actually all of our neighbors.
Carrie, give us your name.
I'm sorry, Carrie Wilt. Uh, my address is 623, no, that's my business address. Too many addresses. Um, 398 Cave Springs Drive in Hunt, Texas is my, um, my personal home address. But I am the owner of, uh, 205 Starkey Street. Um, and so they came to the meeting. I met both of those neighbors, um, that were concerned. Um, some of the other ones that did write in were, um, uh, actually they have long-term renters in those spaces. And so I was not able to communicate directly with them, but have sent letters. They all have my cell phone numbers. All the neighbors, uh, on our entire street, plus the ones behind us, kind of wrapping around us, um, all, all have my, my personal information. And, and I hope that they heard from the planning and zoning meeting, you know, that, you know, our, our intent is, is not to change the charm. It's not to, um, attract people into the neighborhood. That would be, um, a concern for them. Um, just like Kim Richardson. Um, matter of fact, Kim was my mentor, so I follow pretty much everything that she has done, um, on, for, with hers. Um, but most of my customers are paying anywhere from $250 to $350 a night, um, plus $150 cleaning fee. Um, so there's, there's rules about how late they can be out and, you know, noise ordinances and all of those kinds of things. And, um, I've told all of them, if, if there's any issues, they are welcome to call me and we will take care of it immediately.
Carrie, two of the people.
Hold on, just, just a second.
Go ahead.
Uh, we got into this before I declared a public hearing open. So, uh, it's 6:33, the public hearing was opened.
Okay. Uh, Carrie, two of them that I talked to said they did, they did not understand that. They, they had not, uh, they had not had a conversation and, uh, uh, one of them was, was, had said she was going to come tonight because she thought it was all over with, that she wouldn't have another chance to, uh, to object. So, I, I mean, I don't know where the disconnect is.
I don't either.
Well, and can, and can you ask, so part of our agenda packet did say that there were three, uh, responses in opposition.
Yes.
And now I just got the fourth one that Councilwoman Eichner got. Um, and then of course, it also did say that you as applicant met with, um, those individuals who were against it and resolved the differences. So can you tell me how those differences were resolved and if those are the same concern?
I can't say that they were, I, we, we discussed their concerns. I gave them my understanding of that. I think the biggest challenge is, is that the concerns are a lot of like what ifs.
They are.
Like, it's, it's, I mean, really, truly, we've been operating one right next door. Um, none of the opposition letters mentioned anything about traffic, noise, uh, rowdy neighbors, all, all the things that they're concerned about. It's all been happening one door down. And yet not one person said, hey, this, this vacation rental here is gonna, is, has been causing all of those issues. And so it's a lot of, um, I was telling somebody tonight, I think people have this idea in their mind that maybe a vacation rental is like spring break down at Port Aransas, and it's a whole bunch of like keg parties and keg stands. And that's so not the case. Um, you know, I have a family of, of four in there with their elderly dog that's barely wandering around right now. And, you know, they've rented kayaks down at the River Trail. Um, they're going to the Medina River tomorrow. Um, you know, I have somebody who's rented it to go biking. I have, um, traveling nurses that rent it. It's kind of a little bit of everything. Um, and, um, they're so happy to be there and they just want to be someplace quiet, typically out of the city.
And these, what is, of course, could always happen with a permanent resident that's, that's in a neighborhood as well.
Yes, sir.
And, and we did just recently approve another CUP for a short-term rental, um, not too long ago. And so, and, and city council and P and Z, of course, recommended it. City council have done it before.
Yes.
I see a precedent standing and I don't see too much of a basis of the same conditions that we're offering, putting on your permit as the ones we've done before.
Right.
So I don't, I don't see a problem with it. And I appreciate the extent that you did go to to meet with those people that did have concerns and give them your phone number, offer up some type of resolution there. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for doing that.
Well, and Carrie, I would, can I give you the people that I talked to who said, uh, that they, they had not visited with you? Uh, I would just really, really like to have you.
Yes.
Talk with them, visit with them, uh, and, uh, see if you can help resolve things.
Yes.
Yeah, I think with just a better understanding and communication between you and your, the immediate neighbors, um.
And our, our house was just completed. And so I've also just recently offered to give them a tour of the spaces and have like a one-on-one with them as well. So hopefully some of them will take me up on that.
Yeah. I, I mean, I don't think there's a, a, a reason for us to de, really deny it. But could we do a motion condition, no, based on her getting with those neighbors? That's kind of what we did with the.
I think, I think really, we've expressed that. And I, like with Kim, I, I trust Kim to do that.
Yeah.
Trust Carrie to do it.
Okay.
So, um.
Okay.
Well, yeah. And I'll go ahead and just move to approve resolution number 30-2021.
Okay.
Kim, did you? I did. I'll wait for the second, then I'll make my.
Okay. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Okay.
I guess my, my comment, um, is to EA or, uh, I don't see chief here. But obviously complaints are always, um, responded to by the city. So is there, I mean, is there a way that we could track if, when, how many Airbnbs are actually causing complaint-driven responses by our law enforcement? Because I'm not aware that that's, that, that is an issue. Um, I trust that you would probably tell us that, but maybe just knowing that would, would put some people at ease as well.
We certainly, we, um, you know, as we've mentioned before, through tracking from a hotel motel tax standpoint, uh, you know, we do have a pretty good indication of how many of these are in the community right now. Uh, and I believe that number stands right around 48, uh, across the entirety of the, you know, roughly 10,000 to 11,000 households we have in Kerrville. Uh, but we could try to cross-reference, uh, that and at least put that.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's, I don't, it's not something that I want to spend an exorbitant amount of time on. I just haven't, I don't want to be wrong in saying this. I haven't gotten the sense that there have been problems at this point. And then, I don't know, do you have any idea, like, our neighboring communities, like somewhere like Fredericksburg, like what they're?
Uh, anecdotally, uh, we had inquired when we began to track this more closely, particularly from a hotel motel tax standpoint. Um, uh, don't quote me on it, but I believe there's around 700 in the city of Fredericksburg.
Ooh.
And now that's just Fredericksburg proper. That's not Gillespie County. So it.
And they probably have half the rooftops maybe or?
Um, yeah, I would think. Residentially, they're probably about half.
Okay. All right. Well, that gives me some context.
Kim, I had a conversation with, uh, someone who's on council up there and, and, uh, and their biggest concerns are the same one that our people are worried about. They have parking in the streets. They have trash that's left and they have noise. And nobody wants to control the noise, uh, because it's not a good, fun thing to do.
And I will say, um, you know, we, I think, uh, city of Kerrville is being proactive in the sense that we do have a CUP process.
Mm-huh.
Um, and it's in place now. And so the, the community does get to review these on a one-off basis, uh, as they're coming through, uh, whereas Fredericksburg, at least it does, I didn't, don't believe has that at all and has not had in the past. And so, um, you know, they're a little bit behind the curve in that regard.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. We got a motion and second? Any further discussion? All in favor of this item, if you let me know by the raised hand. Okay. And it passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie, I'll get with you and get, get those people talked to.
And we closed at 6:44 that public hearing. And now five B is my client.
Resolution number 31-2021, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize recreation vehicle or trailer park on property consisting of Lot Two R, Block One, Freeman Fritz Edition, subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and more commonly known as 601 Spur 100. We do have one speaker signed up, but it is a public hearing.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, Mr. Paxton, if you'll present this to us.
Thank you, Mayor. This may look familiar. We have the zone case finalized the last meeting to go to RM. Now that the zone RM, they're eligible for the conditional use permit for the RV park. Is currently zoned or was zoned PI again, now it's zoned RM. That is in the outdoor, outdoor and agriculture tourism of the Kerrville 2050 Plan. Here's a copy of their concept plan as far as the layout of the RV park. There's a larger aerial showing where that, where this property is. The request is consistent with the Kerrville 2050 Plan, both in land use and the conditional use permit with the existing zoning. There should be minimal impact on traffic since Spur 100 is intended to be a full arterial. And with that, please answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right. Do we have anyone to speak to this item?
Pablo Brinkman, and you can, you can open the public hearing.
Yeah.
Pablo Brinkman, 3928 Oak Park, Mayor Blackburn, counsel. How are y'all doing?
Thank you.
Well, that storm came out of somewhere. Where did it come from?
Fredericksburg.
Is it really? So it's dad gum, uh, bed and breakfast over there.
No, don't, 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 don't go there.
VRBOs, Mayor. 700. We got 48. We need 480. No, just happy to answer any questions. Uh, great project before you. Um, members of the audience don't have this, but my clients, uh, these are just some screenshots of some product they're looking at. Um, it's just a, it's, it's, these are, these are actually would be, uh, homes that were to be built on site. And of course, um, if we go to this level of, of product, which we are in certain things, you can look up, if that's page north, you can kind of look in that northwest corner up there and see, see some products like that. But, um, no, my, my clients have, uh, purchased this from the former veterans, uh,
VA dogs.
Dog park, yeah, dog, uh, and, and they're, they're doing still great things. And, um, we're excited just to move forward. We went for P and Z and, um, had a good meeting with them and y'all gave us our zoning change and we're here for our cup. I'll toast with the cup. Any questions?
Yeah. Counsel, any questions on this?
These will be all rentals. They're, uh, they're, they're not.
Airbnbs?
They are, yeah. Well, well, uh, they, yeah, there's no permanent residence on site, Judy. Um, Councilman, I, sorry, um, what am I supposed to call you? And, uh, but no, ma'am, they will be, they will be, uh, um, short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals.
Um, if that's the vernacular you're looking for, but there will no be, not any permanent at all.
And how many is, is this an accurate?
We're going to about 480 of, no. Well, this is, this.
You're going to get in trouble, Pablo.
This is, no, no, no. We're, we're just, we're, it, we're, we're marinating on things. We've evolved. So initially my clients, um, they're putting more money and, um, like this product initially was not on the drawing board, but they've listened to council, they've listened to members of the audience and kind of said, you know, we want to bring, you know, Kentucky what it wants. And so, um, Judy, uh, we'll have it definitely, uh, we don't have a defining number right now. We're, it's pretty close to that. It's pretty close to that.
The ones indicated in red?
Three, four.
The ones indicated in red? Yeah. Okay.
This shows about 11.
Pardon me?
Eleven?
I'm going to go with what Mike said, 11.
Okay. Okay.
All right, counsel, questions or comments?
Now, uh, I do have another question. Uh, separate septics for each one?
It's, well, no, we don't have separate septics. We're not required to have.
You're going to put, put them together on one?
Well, they're going to, we're going to have a septic engineer, and that's above my pay grade, Judy. But we've already got, like, the two existing improvements that are on there are on one.
Okay.
And so there will be cluster septics, but of course it'll be per, uh, spec, city specs. But they're not going to each have their own. We have water, we're red hydrant right there above the U and spur on the drawing.
Okay. And you're already one well?
We're not, oh, no, we're not on a well. We have, this is city water.
Oh, it is city water out there. Okay.
You bet.
Didn't think we went that far. Okay.
You did. Unfortunately, we don't, we don't go that far with, uh, the sewer.
Sewer. Yeah. Okay.
What's your timeframe for this project?
ASAP. Well, what, what, well, as soon as we get the, the cup, we're going to start with, with permits. And then, as we all know right now, building and materials is subject to that. Um, my clients have been working with Welborn Engineering and on the entire site plan.
Okay.
And so just as soon as we can get, I will say that, um, once we get the cup, we're we're going to then be working with next to her, we're working with city staff on the drain adjustment that is continuing to be, but we wanted to get this done before we did anything else.
And may I ask, uh, what will be your charges? What will, per night or per week, do you have, has that?
Might not want to commit to that yet.
Well, we we hadn't got that far yet.
Haven't got, okay.
Okay. All right, do we have any other speakers on this matter? Okay, so it's six fifty, we're out of the public hearing. All right, is there a motion on five B?
I move to approve resolution number thirty one dash twenty twenty one.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands. There we go, and it is unanimous. Okay, uh, six A is McLenon.
Ordinance number twenty twenty one dash sixteen and ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty dash nineteen, which created a planned development district PDB pursuant to chapter sixty of the Code of Ordinances, city of Kerrville, Texas. Such chapter more commonly known as the city zoning code by changing the zoning and classification of a portion of the property. Such property being lot two A, block one Martin addition, a subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Texas, and more commonly known as three zero zero eight Riverside Drive, from being part of the PDD to a single family residential R one zoning district. And there are no speakers signed up, however, it is a public hearing.
Right, okay. Paxton.
This is a request to pull this lot out of the existing PD. Uh, the landscaping business will remain on the property, fronting Memorial Drive. This property has been subdivided as a separate lot, and the family intends to use it as a single family residential. It is consistent with the Kerrville twenty fifty plan, and again, we're just pulling it out of the PD to get a R one. And Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on June third with unanimous vote.
All right, council, questions, comments? Okay, six fifty two, the public hearing is open. Anyone to speak to this? If not, six fifty two, we're out of the public hearing, and I'm gonna ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty one dash sixteen.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands. All right, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Ms. McLenon, would you read in six B?
Ordinance number twenty twenty one dash seventeen and ordinance annexing an approximate five point five five six acre tract of land said track out of the James H Cox survey number one forty four abstract number ninety five, the Thomas L. Waters survey number one forty five extract abstract number three fifty four, and a portion that exists as part of Lehman Drive North Kerr County Road into the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas, said track being located the extr- extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Kerrville, Texas, Kerr County, Texas, and more commonly known as one sixty and one seventy Lehman Drive. Further describing the property to be annexed, adopting a service agreement for the property annexed and establishing the zoning for the property annexed. We do have one speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Right, okay. Mr. Paxton.
This is one seventy and one sixty Lehman Drive, request for annexation and zoning for R three. Maybe, just a second here. Obviously, there is no zoning established in the county. It is part of the catalyst area surrounding the hospital uh for continued growth and development in this area on vacant properties. Site plan, the the conceptual site plan at this point, uh showing the property and the access to Lehman Drive. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval on June third with unanimous vote. And I hope the applicant is here with a brief presentation as well.
Council, comments or questions? All right, the public hearing is open at six fifty five.
Nate Miller.
Hi, Nate Miller, fifty three forty one, uh, West Hundred and Fifty First Terrace, uh, Leewood, Kansas. Okay, so I'm with Oval and Property Group out of Leewood, Kansas. I was actually here in February for another development before the crazy uh weather hit. I think it was two days before that. So this is just a brief summary of our portfolio. Uh, we're in six states across the central US. We've over six hundred million dollars worth of closings uh since two thousand and two. This is just a breakdown of our portfolio, presence in Colorado, Kansas, Iowa, Oklahoma, and Texas. And we specialize in affordable housing, whether it's multifamily or senior. We also do some market rate units, but I think that our bread and butter is affordable. Um, this is just our annual production by development cost over the years. The uh bottom groups, those are the financial partners that we work with to make these developments work. Um, like I said, Texas is a huge part of our portfolio. Um, we got almost twenty properties across the entire state. Um, all the dots you see in blue, those are active, affordable uh housing housing properties where people actually live right now. Uh, the two in yellow are under construction, and the two in red uh were awarded funds last summer. That red dot you see in central Texas is what we're gonna talk about here in a few minutes. Um, I believe if you saw these pictures at our presentation in February, um, this is just kind of a highlight of of our work and what we do. Um, this first slide is actually our our slide of Kansas is our headquarters. It's actually my hometown, too. Um, thirty five percent of our exterior product is is stone. The rest is cementitious hardy board. We use lifetime shingles and lifetime paint as well. I'm just gonna quickly scroll through these just to give you a highlight of what we do. Um, kind of show you the product that you'll see here. We got quite a few in Texas. This is in Wolfherth up by Lubbock. Just a few more here. Okay, and to get to why we're here tonight, this is a proposed uh senior living affordable unit, so it's sixty two or older. Uh, we were awarded funds from TDHCA in July of two thousand and twenty. Um, these are all the amenities on the screen. It does say two story. This will be three story. We we talked about that a few minutes ago. Um, and this is kind of the area in question, that white blob you see on your screen. Um, Lehman Drive runs all the way to Sidney Baker Street, and for quite a while there, we were trying to figure out who actually maintained and owed the owned the road kind of in that that panhandle part that you see on the screen. And the county maintains a lot of that as well, but that panhandle part, we weren't entirely sure on who owned and maintained that. And we actually engaged MDS Land Surveying, and they helped us out, and we came to the the realization that the county does own and maintain that panhandle part, and so naturally, the annexation tonight is possible because of that. And we really want to do that for utilities, water, sewer, that sort of thing. Um, and this is kind of probably the the closest product you'll you'll see to the residents at Ridge Hill. Um, this is the residence at Arbor Grove in Arlington, so this is close to the Dallas Cowboys uh football stadium. And that's probably the closest thing you'll see to this this development. Um, and I feel like over the last five years, there's been a big spotlight on mental health, and especially in the last year with the pandemic. And that's why um quality of life is at the forefront of that. And housing especially is towards the top of that list as far as mental health, and that's kind of why we take pride in bringing this product to your community. So I'm glad to answer any questions you might have this time.
I have a question. Um, okay, now, if I remember co- correctly, you have a certain percentage of units that you charge regular rental.
I'll go back to that.
What is that percentage?
Yeah, so as it stands right now, uh, we have sixty units, and there's forty eight low income units. Um, that's forty eight, so there's twelve that would be market.
Oh, you identified low income as a sixty percent or less?
Yes.
Of AMI.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this was, we received a resolution to support on this. I believe it was February of two thousand and twenty.
Yeah.
What is your timeline?
Yeah, so we're hopeful over the next two months, probably by early fall, at the soonest to close with a lender or investor. And then at that point, we would start construction. Construction usually takes about a year. And then three months after that is when people could realistically move in. So I think at the earliest, this would be like an early twenty twenty three move in situation. Um, but the annexation part is kind of the, one of the first parts of the process to get that done.
I asked this question before. I mean, this is steep as it can be. And most of all of your other units that you show are 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 flat. Uh, that's still not going to be a problem.
No, no. It's crazy when you you drive by and you look at it. I thought the same thing as well. Um, I'm trying to think. We have a couple of a couple of units in Colorado that are were real similar to this beforehand, where you kind of look at it and you're like, how the heck is that gonna work? And you'd be shocked what construction companies can do.
And then you said, you know, that you were here in February, and just as an update for maybe people that weren't here. Um, I I'm very excited that you are, you have put another proposal in for another project. Um, I I think that our housing study indicated the need for housing at all price points and levels. And I really am thankful that you're coming in, um, and you've already presented to us. But just for the sake of maybe someone that wasn't here, just a little snapshot of the other project, what what that would look like when the award will uh be considered and and granted by the state.
Absolutely. And the the other one, just to give you an update, that's um, that's the reserves at Holdsworth. I believe it's two fifty Holdworth Drive. I think it's a little bit north of the football stadium. Um, we should find out on that one sometime in July if we're awarded funds. Um, so, but we're, it's looking pretty good.
So we're gonna again be at that, you'll be at that sixty percent or less on the AMI, and this is not a retirement. This is, this isn't the same.
Yeah, so the the presentation tonight for the residents at Ridge Hill.
Right, that's the retirement, but this is the second.
This other one is quote multifamily, so anyone and everyone can live there, but it's surprisingly, even with a lot of the multifamily units, we have a very high percentage of senior living individuals.
But it will be open to one. Anyway, I appreciate you sharing that, and thank you for coming from Kansas down here to talk to us.
Uh, Nate, you know, I've always been impressed by your company, and when I look at sixty three units you've done and nineteen in Texas, that encourages me, and also the state approving units uh and uh uh that that you proposed. It's also federal?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Uh, well, I've got to tell you, uh, when I see the escalating house prices in uh in Kerrville, home we've been in since nineteen eighty four, I'm trying to convince my wife that we ought to go ahead and sell and go ahead and move into the home. So maybe this is an option.
Build quickly, right?
Yeah, yeah. All right, any other questions or comments?
Uh, uh, back to uh the other development um that you came to boot for us. That one, what was the age requirement for that one?
So that's that's multifamily, so anyone and everyone can live there, yeah.
And then this one's gonna be the requirement of seventy two, is that right?
Sixty two, yeah.
Sixty two.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion on six B?
I'll make a motion that.
I think, was it public hearing?
No, wait, 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 wait.
Do we need to close?
Public hearing is closed at seven oh three.
Unless anybody wants to speak.
Yeah. Was there anybody else to speak? I'm sorry, I don't want to. Okay, do I hear a motion on this matter?
I will move that we uh approve ordinance number twenty twenty one dash seventeen. I'll second.
All right, you have a motion second. Further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands, and it is unanimous. Okay, um. Seven A, please.
Written request by Charles Holt Center Point Volunteer Fire Department for the proposed creation of an emergency services district in Kerr County, Center Point Emergency Service District number three. And there are no speakers stuck up.
Okay, chief.
Mayor, council. Charles Holt, two seven eight Stonely Road, Center Point, Texas. Um, after the meeting we had in the workshop, I went back and re-surveyed out the parcels that we had discussed. So that's all ready to go. Um, like we talked about earlier, nothing will change in the fire services. The parcels that were surveyed out will still cover by the Center Point Volunteer Fire Department, but it'll be easier for y'all to move forward if y'all need to on the um, the properties that are out there, so.
Okay, chief, any comment?
Uh, we're, we're good with, uh, we sat down with them and took a look at everything that we had to offer uh for the parcels off twenty seven, and we're good to uh provide that response there.
All right, okay. I forgot to ask, any any speakers on this one?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Uh, thank you. Thank you for coming again. Uh, council, comments?
I do have a question on part of our agenda. Um, the agenda bill summary said that road uh number five twenty was left out, but will be included. Can you indicate where that is?
So, um, row five twenty, it's, I'm gonna speak with the surveyor to see, cause he went out of country. Um, that would be the RV park off of Culver Ranch Road, which wasn't discussed in what we were talking about. Um, I do believe that there's no.
Is that the Blue Pie?
Yes.
Oh, that is the blue?
Yes, the Blue Pie. It was supposed to be left in, but with, I believe with survey lines, cause the gentleman that has that parcel owns all the way to twenty seven. So I have to go back and discuss with the surveyor, but um even with, even with that coming out, I don't, I don't foresee it being a problem, so.
Chief, would you explain this cooperation between uh Kerrville and Center Point and fire protection? Can you give us a summary for for those who may not have been here earlier, or those watching on TV?
Sure, so our fire protection that uh that we provide for this area, so we work together with the Center Point uh Volunteer Fire Department. So that agreement for mutuality, any sort of response that we had in that area will not change. Uh, this is a boundary set by the uh DESD number three that they're proposing for that. So, and that boundary requires that anything inside the ETJ has to come to council. And if we do exclude it, that the Kerrville Fire Department will provide fire service to that uh area that we identified on there. And uh we will continue to do that, and we will continue to work with Center Point on any fire response that we have in the area.
Okay, all right.
Can you provide some comments for the public also on the taxing authority that you'll have there?
So, um, the taxing there will be five commissioners that are um basically appointed by the Commissioners Court. Um, and then those five commissioners will, um, you know, set the tax rates. If they go any higher, they'll be voted on. Um, they can drop them, but they can't raise them. Um, it's pretty much the whole ESD is run by those five commissioners. And um, that's, it's pretty much how it works. I mean, they uh they help provide a service to the community there. Um, they'll collect the taxes, the Kerr County will, Bob Reeves, and uh it'll help fund the volunteer fire, the volunteer fire department, so.
You know, it it, I'm just gonna say makes sense, and it it helps us in terms of fire protection in the general area. Yeah, okay.
And a comment for clarification, um, so what we're doing tonight isn't effectively making this um, um, this authority come into existence.
Correct.
What we're doing tonight is we're saying, this is in our ETJ. And so, yes, take it to the voters who live in that area on a ballot. Let them determine if that's what they want.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, right. Thank you.
That'll occur this November.
Yes, sir.
By the way, we've mentioned extraterritorial jurisdiction a couple of times, ETJ. We we don't, we don't initiate annexation, so, but if we have a request, then we, then we deal with that, okay? All right, any other discussion on this item?
Yeah, I move to approve uh item seven A, the Center Point Emergency Services District number three.
Okay, all right.
Second.
Second.
And I just want to make sure we're clear about the motion. I think that's an appropriate motion. Um, so that approval will consist of essentially a letter from the city manager that consents to the approval of the Emergency Services District. And I'm sure um the chief will appreciate that, because without that, he'll have to come back with a petition, or he could come back with a petition. So that that'll, that ends our review of this, and um it'll be up to him to get it on the uh the November ballot and see that it passes, so, just for clarification.
All right, we got a motion second, all in favor of seven A, if you let it be known by the raised hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, on items for future agenda, I'm gonna start over here on my left and go across. Anybody?
No, not, not today.
I have a lot of things today. I have four things.
Oh, I'm next, yeah.
Oh, I thought you passed.
No, I didn't.
You have things? Okay, you do come.
Okay, you did come before me, sorry. And, and it's something that's, it's been out there, um, I think we need to look at our brick, the bricks, the bricks.
That was one of my thoughts.
Take a look at that and, and what can we, what could be done to, um, help make that situation better? Yes.
Now I have three things, mayor. Now, um, agreed, Judy, um, I think I would also be in favor of looking at if there's something feasible to, to, uh, further preserve that part of history that we've, I think, heard is, is, um, very important to, to some, some people, as I've observed in comments.
Many people.
Many people, yes, um, so I'd like to, to look at options in the future. This is a pushing out the date, something we've probably all heard about, but I did have a citizen come and speak to me, um, and I learned a lot yesterday, just something that, that I know and I talked to EA about is already on the radar, but, um, that, that I'd like for council to have more thought and, um, about is the upcoming, um, eclipse in 2024. I learned a lot yesterday that, you know, the path of the tr- the trajectory and the totality of the eclipse, that we are going to be the second longest, um, total eclipse. Only, um, Mexico will be in a total eclipse state for four minutes and 28 seconds, and will be like four minutes and 25. It's a really, really, um, big deal, and I heard about it several years ago, but it is getting closer, and I know that there are already plans underway, but, uh, just something that, um, I know Ashley and, 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 you know, staff is already being engaged in, but something I'd like to keep on the radar, I know there's communities that have done festivals around it, it's on a Monday. Anyway, um, it'll be here before we know it, even though it seems like it's far away, so I just wanted to, to get that out there. And there are some citizens that I know we could engage to, um, that are interested in, in, in this project and how it can benefit our community, but also how it could logistically be, um, challenging for our community to deal with, so, that's that, and the bricks. Um, I would also like a, a future gen item to talk about meeting procedures, um, and how we, um, utilize our, our technology along with other procedural items that we go through in meetings, just to bring that back up and revisit. And then Assistant Chief Thomason, I'm sorry, I was looking for chief earlier and I overlooked you, so I wanted to thank you for being here, especially and all the staff who's always here, so thank y'all so much for your support, I'm done.
Okay, all right, Mr. Garcia?
I'll echo the support for having a council look at the, the bricks, Main Street, the memorial bricks there too, I had that one. Um, and then I'll also formally, I guess, if we need to sponsor, uh, Councilmember Clarkson's item to review, um, the procedural rules and the procedures for city council meetings, I'd like to see that come up. And then my last one is I would like, uh, council to, uh, discuss and possibly take action on the necessity and the frequency of having our city council workshops. I know that was something that I did talk, uh, with, um, EA about when we all started, uh, after the last election, he said council would kind of come together and see how we want to do our workshops, whether we want to still do it, how often, when. So just for us to have that discussion there.
Okay.
Uh, may I do one more thing?
No.
No, I think we need, uh, congratulations to our police department for their 85th anniversary.
Great, great, okay, at 7:14, we are adjourned.